So call us meeting to order Angie, could you call the roll please?
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here. Thank you. John, could you give us a prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you would bless our meeting tonight and that all parties would consider each other kindly and respectfully, and that we would consider all the things before us and act upon them in the best interests of the taxpayers of Grashit County. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. Okay, we have a couple, three changes to the agenda. Under new business, Terry Ball has an item she's bringing to us, so let's make her number three. And then Jan, I think you have a vacancy on A-CAP you want to bring to us?
Yes.
Let's take that number four. And then number five will be the broadband discussion. If no one objects to that, and also under unfinished business, M1, Matt has a quick update for us. Anyone have anything else? Motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Commissioner Bailey, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay?
Pass.
So, brief public comment. Anyone of the public wants to make comment? Could you please come forward? The mic is up there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brian Harrison. I'm working with Advisor Care Home Healthcare. I reside in Rockford, Michigan, but we serve patients in the Grashit County area as well as others of the state. I'm going to actually be heading out after my public comments, so I hope we can connect at a later time, so anybody that comes late can take my chair as well. I'm here to today to discuss some challenges we've been facing as a result of the 2019 Auto Insurance Reform Act that went into place into effect this past July for home health. First and foremost, I want to be very clear that it's not our intention to roll back the reforms as they are written. There was in our industry, in the world that we lived in with auto insurance and the care that was derived, there was a lot of fraud unfortunately that happened, and so we're thankful now for the measures that are in place due to the reforms to police that and monitor that better. One thing that we find challenging is the effect to home health in the sense that we as a company would provide or do provide caregivers, certified nurse assistants, and others to work in the homes with these individuals who've been catastrophically injured. We would oftentimes bill around $30 an hour and be paid that from the auto insurance provider, these services. As a result of the reforms, that same $30 now has been reduced by 45%, meaning we're getting a reimbursement of around $17 per hour to do that work. And quite frankly, we can't find people and pay them with the wages to do that while maintaining their employment status and operating a successful or business with integrity, I guess I should say. So I'm here today just to really draw some awareness to that issue. We do recognize it as a state issue, not really a county specific matter, but it is affecting all of us. And I hope again, we can be on the agenda going forward to at least consider a resolution that the county in a symbolic way act or present that to the state legislature, asking them to do something to correct this unintended consequence as it relates to home health. So that's really all I had. Again, I just wanted to thank you guys for letting me speak for a few minutes. I believe I sent some information to the county board already. Thank you guys if you've received it. And again, would love to just be a resource and be potentially on the next agenda or have some conversation as to what we or each of you as elected officials can also speak to at the state level with our local reps and senators. So thank you. It sounds probably about three minutes, but probably we're close to that. I'm getting good at that elevator pitch as you guys can imagine, so. And again, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I'm just going to head out. I do have some other things I have to attend to, so thank you all very much. And appreciate your time.
Thank you for addressing the commission. Anyone else? Matt, do you see anybody online? Anyone online like to address the commission?
I am not seeing anybody online right now.
Okay, thank you. Next, let's move on to the consent calendar. Would anybody like to move anything out of the consent calendar to talk about?
What was the consent calendar?
Motion by Commissioner Bailey to approve the consent calendar. I need a second. Second by Commissioner Smith, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. So we are up to Tracy, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Happy March. For being shown a almost spring day, just to wet our whistle. I have a few updates for you. Some of these are on topics that you will be discussing later in the meeting. Perhaps this will add fodder to those discussions. Looking first at ARP issues, I'm just reminding this board that our next meeting with the township supervisors, villages, and so forth is scheduled for this Thursday, two evenings from now at 6:00 PM. That's at the R E S D building here in Ithaca. This is not, has not been scheduled as a special meeting of the board. At the last meeting, you folks sat and listened and heard from those folks. Would not, there will not be a need for you to deliberate and decide, so this is not a scheduled as a special board meeting. Also, on ARP, with the greater flexibility that is in the final ARP rule as opposed to the interim rule under which we had been operating, we will want to look at additional projects in our county buildings and facilities. I've been conferring with Tony Miller and we're working on a list now that we would break to you and that we would propose. These, of course, will need to be weighed against the additional projects that are likely to be submitted by townships and villages. That's just a discussion for the future and just making you aware of that. Regarding blight, I spoke with you folks, it might have been at the last meeting, the meeting before, frankly, I lose track of time, but you folks approved our continuing the partnership with the township and villages on blight eradication for another year. I did a blight program overview for the township folks at the last association meeting. I think most or all of you were there to hear that. As a follow-up, last week I sent a memo via email to township officials and also villages about this opportunity. Nothing more to say about that really, except that I did include that, just the heck of it, in your meeting packet, so you can see what what we're communicating. All four of the participants from year one have signaled their intent to participate again. Denise Rossman has indicated that her board out in the township has actually approved that as a board matter. And I think you'll hear in a few minutes that Ashley, the village of Ashley, would very much like to participate and will be looking to you for some funding this evening. We'd be just thrilled to get into Ashley and help those folks out with an issue that's been very much on their minds. Now, when I last spoke with you folks about the program, I indicated that we were still in the process of calculating program costs. What did it actually cost us to do this work in year one? I've completed that process and I'm confident that we can do this in year two for just $1,000. That'll be $1,000 for two cases. And Dave Nelson has indicated he'll write us a personal check if we run over that. Pretty sure, pretty sure that's what he said, but you know, I'm always.
Just go where the money's at.
I just follow the money band. I heard that somewhere. So thank you, Dave, very much for that. Bringing the rates down may very well generate additional interest. I hope it will. So that's where we, where we are with blight. Quite some time ago, you folks had approved our sending out an RFP for a classification and compensation study. It's been a few decades since we had had one of those, whereas they are, you know, recommended every, you know, six, eight years, something like that. The period for submitting proposals closed today. We have received six proposals, which is a a response we're just thrilled by. Our next steps are to put together an employee group to do an initial review of these and then to bring recommendations to you, the board, and then determine what steps you might want and, you know, what involvement you might want to have. And any next step, of course, we'll come to you with recommendations on all of that. Moving to broadband, you'll be talking about that tonight quite a bit, I am sure, and you continue to express interest in doing something about this. It's difficult, of course, to know where to begin, but I did read today that the state has partnered with an outfit called Connected Nation Michigan to lead a broadband infrastructure audit and validation project over the next six months. The plan is to utilize $2 million in federal CARES Act funding to conduct a full accounting of the state's high-speed internet service to identify gaps and provide a clearer picture as officials plan to significantly expand access through the bipartisan federal infrastructure funding. I'm obviously reading from the announcement that I received. The effort is to help identify and map the precise location of existing high-speed internet assets in the state and the areas where access to high-speed internet is absent, absent along more than 65,000 miles of public right-of-way. Understanding where high-speed internet access and assets exist and where there are gaps will be critical in both securing and prioritizing the $100 million in federal funding that is anticipated to be coming to Michigan for high-speed internet infrastructure build-out. Now, I have, I reached out to Jim Wheeler, Casey Zader, and just asked if those folks might help me to track this effort. I don't want something to, for me to miss anything that might be an opportunity for Grashit County, so I've got another set of eyes on this possible apparent opportunity. Beyond that, we're very busy elsewhere. Trying to get our arms wrapped around buildings and grounds projects, capital improvement plan that has been slowed down significantly, mostly attributable to staff illnesses, but trying to get our feedback under us and had a good productive meeting today to light some fire into that. So Tony Miller will do his annual report to you probably early April, and we'll have some additional information for you then. That's all I can think to tell you today.
Alrighty, any questions for Tracy? Apparently you made it clear as mud.
I'm sorry about that.
Alrighty. Next, Sheriff Morris, who looks like you're up? Oh shoot, I'm jumping ahead, aren't I? Commissioner Lumberman?
We'll talk about the Parks and Rec village funding request a little later on. This isn't really a committee report, but I just wanted to let you guys know that I think it was the second meeting in October, we talked about moving cash balance into the OPEB fund on a 15% drop, and that has not been triggered yet, so we haven't made that, that move yet. The market still hasn't been down that much. And the only, the only other thing I'd like to say about the OPEB fund was, I believe at the last meeting, Chris put up a slide and it showed the performance from January 1 to February 9, and it was down 1.3%. And I don't think we talked about that at the time, but that's, that is excellent, yeah, because the market as a whole was down 10% in that time. And so I was, I was really excited about that. I thought that was a good, good performance. That's all I've got. I don't have anything else as far as committee reports.
Commissioner Bailey?
I had the opportunity to attend a wellhead protection meeting for the city of Ithaca and surrounding area. It's our second time we've had a meeting, and we're just identifying different potential hotspots just to make sure that all remediation is either taking place or is, will be taking place on those sites. What wellhead protection basically does is we discover and look for any wells in the area that have been, now this is through the health department records, the old records, we study all those, and we inspect those wells to make sure that abandoned wells, to make sure they've been properly tagged. That way there's no pollution or anything gets down those wells, so. I find it quite interesting, so. It's, it's, it's a good group, and we hope to, you know, keep us all a little safer. That's all I got.
Thank you. I did speak with Representative Roger Hauck, and Commissioner Lumberman also did with me. He tells us that the feds are going to be sending money for broadband, but it's going to be coming to the state, so he's going to keep an eye out on when that money comes, because we want to make sure it gets to the rural areas that need it and not Detroit. Keep an eye on that. Commissioner Bunty?
Yes, I have several things. I had a phone call from ACAP this last couple of weeks. Excuse me, I have laryngitis coming on again. Anyway, they informed me that Eva Clark no longer wanted to be on the board, and she was my delegate. So I talked with our clerk and wondered about putting out some kind of ad or whatever, and she came up with a wonderful idea to contact the schools. There are, and we found a person, her name is Michelle Riggle. Actually, she goes to the loose, she works at Loose Schools, and I've seen her, but just never knew who she was. And she's very interested, and it's a good fit, because that's what she does at school, has to do with children and problems at home. And so anyway, I've talked with her. She's agreed to start in with these meetings. I talked to ACAP, they were, they said that Eva had missed several meetings and that it was very important that they need someone there to represent Grashit County. So I'm very confident, after talking to Ms. Riggles or Michelle Riggles, that she is going to be a perfect fit and probably a long-time person to be on that board. It works well with her, with her school, because they will allow her to leave because they have something to do with the schools. And also, there will be times where if she can't make it, she will go on Zoom. And also, I told her I would like to probably go with her a couple of times, maybe this summer. Their meetings are every other month. And in the past, I've always had jobs that I worked all, you know, 12 months. Now it's a little easier for me to get away and do a few extra meetings. I also went to Michigan Works last night, had a wonderful meeting there. It was their annual meeting, so there's a lot of material there. I've passed it over to our clerk, so it'll be into your packets for the, online, and in packets for the next meeting, county commission meeting. But it gives you a lot of statistics of population and jobs and Michigan in a whole, they said, lost population, but we still have accumulated a lot of jobs, so. They, you know, this is something that takes a long time, all year long, really, to look into it, find out, you know, more and more what's going on each, because it changes so rapidly in the last few years with the COVID-19. We have, right, we have a lot of jobs. We have a lot of people that's been in jobs for a long time, but the new, new youth coming in are had, you know, they, they take a job for a couple of months and then they don't really like it, so they just quit and they want to go to a different job. Also, another thing is that they, Michigan Works has given money to train, so they do all kinds of training for different jobs. So kids that can't afford to go to college, you can be trained in several things such as welding or I mean, there's probably carpenter work, stuff like this. So anyway, there, it was very a positive meeting yesterday. And so that, that'll be passed out to all the commissioners and anybody that would like to get online to read a little bit more about the statistics of jobs. By the way, one of the things I noticed on there is wind turbines, they were looking, that you're assured of, I'm not sure exactly, something it does with the wind turbines. Had a name, I can't even remember what it was, but I noticed that on there, so that was interesting. It also tells in that, in the paperwork is that it tells you, like, say they need nurses, it tells you how many nurses they need for the state of Michigan, and also the different wages that they would start out at, whether you have a college degree or just a school degree. And had a meeting there last night. And I would have to say probably the biggest issue last night was that they did pass that they're going to have a manufacturer marijuana. And I'm not sure all the details on it. They've just passed it. They don't have anybody, they did have, they've had people in the past that was interested in moving into Breckenridge and opening up marijuana shops or growing marijuana, but at this time, since they just passed it, they don't have anybody moving off the bat that's interested in moving to Breckenridge for, to have a marijuana, marijuana shop. So anyway, I've been pretty busy. I think I have a few other meetings, but a lot of my meetings are, oh, by the way, I was elected to yesterday on Michigan Works to be on the executive board to represent Grashit County. And so that was an honor to be elected to do that. So I'm very busy doing lots of things.
Thank you, Jan. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I didn't make any meetings the last couple of weeks, but I've been in touch with about four or five of you here in the audience that I've chatted with about things, so. But I've been in Florida. I turned up the air miles.
Alrighty. Now Sheriff Morris.
So here in Grashit County, we have no K-9 dog in the county. We did have one state trooper that lived in Alma and was based out of Lakeview Post, had a dog, but he took a promotion, I think it was in November, and he no longer has the dog, so. Discussion, they come up at the office about starting a K-9 unit back up in the sheriff's office. Nothing new to the sheriff's office. It is in our special assignment section of our contract that we can have a K-9. We had one in the early 2000s, and then that dog had to be retired due to some medical problems. And then we had another one in 2012, and the deputy left in 2014. So we sold the dog back to the company that we got the dog from. And then the state police had the dog since, so. Without a dog in the county, we had a discussion about putting a K-9 unit together, and I posted it for interest, and Deputy Zach Tavonan put in for it. He was the only one to put in for it. And he's done some extensive research on a K-9 unit for, for us. We have secured some grant money for this, that there's going to be no startup cost to us for a K-9 unit, and we've also secured a possible USD grant, USDA grant for to pay for 35% of a new car when we decided to order a new car for the K-9. What we do, policy is there's about an eight-month wait for cars, is we would just convert one of our cars that we currently have over, and then when we go to buy another car, we'd use that 35% to change, start a brand-new K-9 car, so we can get it up and running. So I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Zach Tavonan. He has a PowerPoint for you, and then the Homeland Security Grant was through EM Soltis. So if you have any questions when we're done, we'd be happy to answer them, so I'll turn it over to Zach.
Hello, for those of you, those of you who do not know me, I'm Deputy Zach Tavonan, here with the Grashit County Sheriff's Office. As the sheriff mentioned, over the past few months, I've been working on putting together a proposal, which was then put into the works to add a K-9 to this wonderful department and greatly enhance the safety for the county as a whole. Up on the screen, we have the presentation, which I'll go through some of the big points, the selling points, and the reason overall that it was created, the options we went with, and how we came across the fact that there is no startup cost for the department in order to add a K-9 unit to the department. First, the purpose of the presentation is obviously to provide information about this K-9 unit. It's been, as Sheriff said, about 10 years since we've had one. The benefit of the K-9 is it will provide a unique and very valuable set of skills to improve the sheriff's office, our ability to provide quality, fair, and comprehensive public safety and policing to the county, both in criminal and non-criminal applications for the sheriff's office. The benefits of the K-9 are multiple. Due to their big advantage in smell tracking and agility, these can be used in both criminal and non-criminal applications such as tracking and apprehending criminals for arrest and prosecution, prosecution, locating illegal drugs, increase deputy safety while secure searching areas and buildings, track to find lost and endangered missing children and the elderly as they wander off from homes that they're in, et cetera, as well as be a highly visible and popular deterrent to crime within the community. Additional K-9 benefits are non-direct, but also serve for the sheriff's office and the county. Our service is a public relations representative between the sheriff's office and the public. In the next couple of slides, there's a quick case study, breaking down Bath Township's Facebook page versus our Facebook page. Benefits of that will be discussed there, too. It provides appearances and demonstrations at various functions, enhances the training experience of new deputies when it's built training officer, enhancing our deputies' ability to react to every scenario when they're on their own. Aids in deputy retention, as it adds an additional ability to specialize within the department. This is good as deputy retention increases the overall knowledge level of every deputy serving our wonderful community. And aids in deputy recruiting, so we make sure we can get the best of the best coming here as it opens more doors and more options with this dog being in the county. As I said, the quick overview of the Facebook presence. Looking at Bath Township, they have K-9 Ico, and they use him as a focal piece for their community outreach and online presence. With that, they've been able to develop a large following. For example, they have 91,607 followers for their township, population of only 11,598 residents. The reason that that's important is it's able to get out really big, important messages such as road closures. Obviously, if we have bad accidents on the highway or something like that, being able to get that out so that residents can know how to get home safely, make sure they avoid troubled areas such as that. This relationship can also help solve crime. Bath was actually able to solve a bank robbery with Facebook tips. So now let's take a look at our presence. Our current online presence has just over 6,000 followers for a population of 40,000 people. Reasons why that's relevant, as previously stated, it helps with recruitment, as people are just going to be able to find our department easier. It helps obtaining information in cases, builds community relations, so we have a very strong, even stronger than we already have, community presence, as well as aids in getting important information to the community. Looking at the enforcement over the last three years, the drug cases on the screen there represent all the drug cases from 2019 to 2021. Now, a quick glance would show that the numbers are going down. Yes, that means deputies are doing a fantastic job of getting them off the street. However, that also means that criminals are adjusting to what we have available to us. Adding this K-9 gives us another tool to help defeat this, that amazing nose of the K-9. Couple live instances and examples of the benefits of a K-9 occurring on the 5th of January of this year, Michigan State Police K-9 actually tracked a man for nearly four miles after traffic stop, and was able to apprehend him with no danger to the public. In two, in the last two months in the county, we have had a missing child in Alma resisting and obstructing on a sergeant, multiple elderly leave assisted living homes in the middle of winter, and a threat to Ithaca schools. All of these things would greatly benefit with the addition of a K-9 unit to directly impact those. Public safety is number one. A quick Google search would show five adult foster care cares, six school districts, and hundreds of businesses in Grashit County. A police K-9 would improve the, the safety of all of these, as well as be a A police canine would improve the the safety of all of these, as well as be a public deterrent to help crime not even occur there ideally. A canine at a football game always makes a statement that we are here and we care both about the citizens and their children. A canine also serves as a way to build relationships with neighboring agencies so that information's able to easily pass through agencies so that we can keep on top of it and make sure everybody's safe. Now, what does it cost? As we've discussed briefly, we're actually able to get it to no cost, which I'll touch on. But there are unique costs associated with the canine program. Through funding, we utilize multiple options, local community bestie grant here in the future, as well as an emergency management homeland security grant, which will actually cover the entire cost of the dog and all the related training for, well, me. Attached to this slide is a video. I will leave it up to you guys if you wanted to watch it. It's about four minutes. It discusses where the canine is coming from. It's coming from Northern Michigan Canine. It's a four week handler course. It covers all the starting equipment. It's located in Harrison, Michigan. To speak to their repertoire, it's where Clinton County, MSU and more get their canines in the local area. That provides many benefits to the department. And as I said, we don't have to watch it. I just have it in here. So I'll leave that to you guys. If that is a no. Okay. Looking at the vehicle, we went through multiple options and we selected as the sheriff earlier stated is we are using a currently owned, fully marked interceptor. The reason we're going with this route is due to the delay of vehicles across the board, which I'm sure those of you trying to buy a new car, truck have run into issues as well. The price on there is the price quoted from ProCom of 9,649. Once again, this is going to be covered with an assortment of grants. Talking about those grant opportunities, the emergency management grant is going to cover. EM has the full number, but I think it's like 16,352 ish dollars of canine equipment, canine training and whatnot. In the future, every year following this year, we're actually able to utilize the USDA equipment grant, which grants 35% of the total cost of any vehicle project for the sheriff's office, as well as multiple community grants are being utilized to allow us this opportunity with zero startup cost for the sheriff's office or the county. This is the exact scenario. Our total cost ended up being about $20,649. Once again, all of that money was utilized using grants. And that's not even including a new vehicle yet, which will be used in the future. Keep in mind, the average working life of a canine is six to eight years. So going to be able to utilize this canine for a long time to come, providing continued experience. And as the canine goes, you're going to get more out of it as well as it learns on the job. Estimated annual costs are noted. I actually was able to partner with the Ithaca Animal Hospital. So the standard vet procedures and medication is provided through them. You have the standard food costs, grooming costs, some training uniforms needed. But once again, all of that, we're taking it as we go because we're going to kind of learn as we go here. There is also protection that is part of the grant for the canine. We're not going to leave our canine out there unprotected like the rest of us. So it will also have a staff crew vest provided through LOF street fighting. It's highly mobile. It allows the dog to do his job, maintain its warmth and or coldness, depending on the weather and protection for the dog. Policies and procedures were also developed specifically for this canine program so that it fits what we're looking for from the sheriff's office, both in community outreach as well as criminal apprehension and such. I was able to develop this with the help of the sheriff's office admin and local contacts I had at agencies such as Bath Township, Clinton County Sheriff's Office and Ingham County Sheriff's Office. These do comply with state guidelines as well as departmental goals. In conclusion, the canine is a tool deputies can use in an ever changing dynamic situation that deputies face on a daily basis. The canine is a use of force, is the only use of force that can be recalled if a situation changes. The mere presence of a canine may shift the momentum of a peaceful situation or peaceful resolution to an encounter that may not have ended so peacefully before. A canine will help our deputies in keeping crime rates low and keep our schools, businesses and community members safe. Any questions?
Zach, what does it need from us?
Nothing.
We really don't need anything. This is more of just an FYI for you guys, Sam. I didn't want you guys hearing through the community, oh, the sheriff's office has got a canine and you guys go, what, huh? So I have it, you know, the startup cost, the dog will live with Zach at his home. We will also have a temporary kennel at the sheriff's office for when he's here. He's not in the car to put him in, or her, I should say. You guys say, we don't know what we're getting yet. They take him up to canine place in Claire, Northern Michigan canine, and they pair him with a dog that they think is compatible. So I really don't need a board approval. I just wanted to give you guys a head up, heads up is what we're doing and not leave you guys in the dark when you're at a township meeting or something and he says, hey, the sheriff's office is getting a canine. And you go, huh, what? Yeah, didn't know about it. So but Zach has done a great job with this and he's really taken a good leadership role with it. And we hope that we get a lot of years out of the dog and and like you said, get some recruitment and retention and whatnot.
Sheriff, no. Would you? But when, when, when would you anticipate activating this?
So the school would be here now. Mid-April, so about six weeks from now. And it's four weeks long, so about mid-May to the end of May, we would have it up and running.
Had a car getting switched over now?
Yeah, we haven't done that yet, but ProCom said it'd just take, what'd they say, a couple of weeks?
It'd be, you know, once the parks get here, it'll be a week. It should be done in time for training. Training is April 4th, the entire month of April and then come the beginning of May, the dogs will be good to go.
Yep. Hear me when you said, once the parks get here.
Yeah, right. So we were not creating a new position. I'm not creating a canine officer. He's part of our office and we're not buying an extra car for him. It's going to be just one out of our fleet. He drives one now, he's going to drive a car then, so.
Can you bring the dog in for us to see?
Absolutely, we can probably do that. He's going to be actually shifting the nights here this weekend. He's been on days, but we got a back officer back that was on workman's comp and he had been filling in for on days for him. And he'll start nights, but absolutely, we can get the dog in here once we get him here, so.
And it sounds like any additional cost outside the grants can be very minimal.
Very minimal.
Oh, would you have a dog like that? Do you have a special diet that they have to eat?
I'm sorry, did that mean to catch you off?
No, no, that's all right.
Come on back up here, Zach, because it's microphone.
It depends on the dog. Certain dogs do have a specific diet due to allergies and whatnot, but each dog is different. I actually, my uncle has a canine through the same program where we're going through, through Clinton County. And I don't believe his dog's on any specific diet, but their other dog has a more specific diet. It all just kind of depends on the dog.
Another question I have to ask you, and only because at the schools that I'm at, there's a lot, not a lot of the schools have dogs, but that's a different type of dog. Now, it's my understanding, like over at Loose Road, they just got a baby pup. They have to wait one year and then he'll go to a special school. Did you have to do that with this dog?
They completely do it. And it's completely, how old will it be roughly?
I believe it's going to be about a year old by the time that I get it.
So then we'll do six to eight years out of it. And we have not met the dog. We don't know anything about it. We kind of probably, the breed is probably going to be shepherd, but it could be something else.
Correct. It could be either most likely a German shepherd or Belgian Malinois.
Okay, so what are they doing that one year? Is that where they're training it or?
Yes, so actually the dogs are all imported from Europe. So they are trained in obedience, in patrol usage and detection for narcotics, all in Europe. Then they come over here. They are continued to be trained in the way that our offices do things. And then basically I am at then, my four week period is me learning how to utilize the dog and building that bond.
That's what I wondered. It's a little different than the schools, but.
Yep, it's a little different and it can be run through the schools and whatnot. I've talked with Ithaca High School as I was the Ithaca unit for a while. And they, they're all on board with that and having them at games and whatnot, so.
That'd be nice.
If, if you're in a situation that is a drug situation, does the dog going nuts give you probable cause to investigate further than you would be able to with just human beings?
So I can speak on that. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say. The dog will alert.
I wouldn't say. Or some type of motion that it makes that he will know what it's alerting to. But like, I guess what I'm saying is, are you then able to investigate where?
Yes, yes.
Need a search warrant otherwise?
No, it gives us probable cause to investigate.
I have one more question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that marijuana has been passed to the state of Michigan, is that something you still teach the dog or you kind of keep him away from that?
So I have not asked this particular agency whether or not that they train the dogs to alert to marijuana. There is multiple sets of case law, though, that states due to the dog not being able to tell you what narcotic it did alert to, that it still is probable cause to search said vehicle or whatnot. And that's due to older dogs being trained on marijuana and whatnot. Recent case law has said that.
So might you be able to use this on a, one of the illegal grow operations?
Could, but merely probably driving down the road, then we'd have to do the search warrant because you don't know exactly where it's coming from, so.
Correct. It would, it would have to be to a stop. There's case law against going up to like a residence as a search.
Well, I think, I think it's a great thing for our county and I'd like to thank you for stepping up and doing this for us. I think it's going to be a great addition to our county.
Thank you. I want to thank EM Soltis, too. He worked good, hard on that, getting that Homeland Security Grant for us. It was, was it 14,000? No.
No, over 16,000.
Over 16,000, sorry. So.
I follow you. I think it'll be a great.
Yeah, so federal grant that worked well, so.
Does then they have a dog also or will they use your dog?
Who's that?
Magnet. Will Magnet?
Magnet.
They would, we would use our dog if they needed.
But he would be the handler with it.
You'd always be with the dog.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, the, the dog is available to supporting, assisting other agencies and whatnot, as well as Magnet through us, so.
If Breckenridge called out and he's off duty and they had a missing person from their home on McLoughlin Road, he would respond, we would pay him to respond to assist another agency like that, so.
Well, thank you. It's be, that's going to be a very interesting job for you.
I'm very excited.
Great.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Okay, moving on. Pete Little's got a proposal Parks and Rec.
Pete wasn't able to be here tonight.
Okay, so he's handling it.
Somebody from Ithaca would be here tonight.
Larry Ringel.
I don't have the proposal. You have, you have the grant. My name's Larry Ringel and Mary Humm is our current president of the Senior Activity Building Board. I am the most recent. I just came because I wanted to be available if you had some questions. Did all of you see the announcement in the paper, either in the Morning Sun or in the Herald? If you didn't, I have the information that we gave the papers and I would make that available to you. I'm just here to hopefully appreciate the fact that you're.
Larry, what, what's this specifically for?
Okay, the Senior Activity Building Board has approved a project to build four pickleball courts on the property that lays between the senior activity building and the water tower on property that's owned by the city. And the city approved that. At this point, we have already led our contracts for the slab, for the professional surfacing and for the fencing around it. Total project should be just a hair under $150,000.
You requested or what?
We requested through grant, Jamie Khan offered to write a grant.
Right.
For Parks and Recreation. I wrote a grant for the community foundation. I presented the material to Jamie and helped him grant request to Parks and Recreation. This is the information that was given to the papers when we announced in Denver. And that was added to the grant request. The four pickleball courts, the slab should be laid sometime after the 15th of May. We want, as much as we can, we want to be after frost. The slab has to cure for 30 days. And then the professional court surfacing is done after that. And when that's completed, we'll put the fence around it.
Can I ask you, why do you call it before or call?
I didn't even know what pickleball was when this idea came up. It's, this describes how it's played. But it's basically a game played with larger paddles and a wiffle ball the size of a baseball on a court that's about the third of the size of a tennis court.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it's the most popular, the most improving, the most, I can't think of the word, but anyway, it's growing faster than any other outdoor sport in the country at the moment.
So it does nothing to do with pickles, just that?
No, no.
I thought maybe you're giving pickles away.
No. And the reason that we're doing this project for the Senior Activity Building Board is because our goal is to try to get as much use out of the senior activity building as possible. And Joe Jones has been our director and the Food with Friends director for years. And we're coming to the end of an era. There isn't going to be another Joe Jones. So we're trying to, as much as we can reinvent ourselves and get a younger people who might be willing to come down there, use the courts, use our building and hopefully keep things going on into the future. That's, that's our goal.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So. What's that grant must for?
I believe it's 80,000.
80,000.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
This is a request to the Parks and Rec Board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And are they requesting us to approve it?
I believe so. Well, they've, they've already approved it through their process.
Okay.
What we're doing is affirming.
That was a huge game. They, they converted some tennis courts down at Rainbow Lake Rock. People play like.
Well, where you live in Florida is the national.
Oh, yes, yeah.
This week, pickleball championships.
We were to an RV park where they had them and hundreds of cars, people there coming.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Just amazing.
I guess I'm missing out on this.
Island Park at Mount Pleasant converted about half of their tennis courts to pickleball courts. The same people that finished those courts with a professional surface is the contractor that will use to finish these courts. And you might be interested to know that the professional finishing, the surface that's put on is 25,000 plus of the total request. So it's, it's a significant.
Well, it's a non-slip type surface, so.
And there's a fitness to it.
Those like me don't go up.
I gave the information about this, like the sheet that I just gave you to the Chamber Commerce over at Alma, so they could get it in their newsletter. The President of Chamber Commerce said, well, my whole family plays. This is my mother-in-law beats me all the time.
I don't have my laptop. I, I remember the number, I looked at it, but what was the number that the, the, to rec is going to?
80,000.
80,000, yeah. And that was money that, you know, it's growing in their fund and stuff like that. I would have moved that we confirm that.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passed.
Last one, it's finished. I'd like to go watch it.
We should be done by first of August. And on behalf of our board, we appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Good to see George and Sam and stuff like.
Yeah.
Me and George play in Florida all the time.
Yeah, we do. We're part of the professional.
Does it pay well? All righty. Then, next, Terry has a. Then, next, Terry has a, something for us.
Hello, everyone. I'm here tonight to ask, I'm the contract before you. This contract would allow me to spend time with Meg from Yo and Yo, which is above and beyond the scope of the work that. It would be to complete the reconciliation of the delinquent tax revolving fund and the general fund, which was not done at the time when I took office. I have worked a lot of hours trying to get this done, but I have identified the years with issues and a lot of the issues, but I have run out of time. It has to be done by March thirty-first audit. And I am now in tax settlement season, so I have run out of time. This would allow me to understand what had gone wrong in the past, confident that things will be done correctly moving forward. And if approved, funding for this would come out of the delinquent tax revolving fund.
We have a estimate on what, what the project?
We have tentatively, if this is approved, set aside two days, which if it took one day, it would be around fifteen hundred dollars, and if it took two days, it would be ballpark three thousand dollars.
And in your budget?
Yes.
Yeah, come out of the tax fund. I guess the question I have is that, does that catch us up?
Yes.
Does that do this year's? I mean, would?
Well, it would, it would get us up to at the end of the last fiscal year, where that's where we're.
So we're doing twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
And how far back has it not been done?
It has not been reconciled since September of twenty twenty. It was the fiscal year.
Will we be charged a penalty for this?
Um, it, it's for the audit, so yeah, I'm, I don't know if we would be charged a penalty, but not be favorable.
Do, is it something that has to go to the state or? Is this something that has?
No, this is for the audit. And statutorily, this is my responsibility to do, so. I need to get it caught up and get us where we need to be.
Okay, I make a motion that we do this. First of all, I don't think you have enough people in your office. In the past, there's always been five to six people. You're down to two and a half?
I have two, and not including me.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow her to get this caught up.
Motion by Commissioner Bunning. We have a second.
Second it.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. Any further questions or discussion?
We need a roll call.
Are we, Terry, are we going to see anything on our audit report about this? Will we see suffer deficiency or something on our audit report this year?
Not if we can get it caught up and done by March thirty-first.
That's the window.
That's the do or die date.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ready? Commissioner Bunning has requested a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
You, Terry?
Real quick, you got any idea when they'll start, Terry, or is it just when they get available? And they're probably in their busy time?
No, actually, this week we're starting one of these.
Oh, okay. Good.
All righty, next, Jan, you have something on the AICAP board?
Yes, I'd like to motion that we allow Abashaw Ringel to take the place of Yvette Clark, or AICAP board. Excuse me.
Is that, is there a length of service there? We're appointing her, but is there, is there a length that she can serve?
I think it's a two-year.
Pardon?
I think.
It's a two-year.
Your turn.
You're filling the vacancy.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
I don't know how much Yvette's got on her.
I didn't bring my book down.
Okay, well, so the, the motion would have to read, we would appoint.
You're filling the vacancy.
Filling the vacancy until such time as she needs to be reappointed.
Yes.
Okay, we have a second to that? Oh, we did. Okay, so, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, nay? Motion passed. All right. Next, we're having a broadband discussion. I believe Commissioner Lumberman, you're going to lead this?
Yeah. As far as the discussion goes, what I would basically ask is we would perhaps appoint a project manager for broadband. And my thinking on this is that in our conversation with Roger Houck the other day, he sounded like state of Michigan could get two billion dollars to be doing things for broadband out in the country. We just saw Elon Musk use SpaceX to provide internet services.
Isn't that cool?
For Ukraine.
I just flipped the switch.
I just flipped the switch and keep them boys online, right?
They've been able to communicate ever since, yes.
I've had people ask me, is it possible that the network of windmills possibly be used somehow? If there could be some kind of signal that could bounce off of the windmill towers, which I have no idea. I have no idea. I have no expertise whatsoever. But I'm also aware that there's other funding sources too, that some of these smaller companies are able to put together projects where they lay cable out in the boon docks, and they're able to access grants and things like that. So I don't know whether we will be using ARP funds or not to be able to do something with broadband, but I think it would be wise to at least have somebody that could specialize in this kind of work to maybe pull some facts together for us and give us a presentation at some point of just what is possible.
Do you have somebody in mind?
I don't. I have talked to several people, but I don't have anybody in mind yet.
Possibly, could we contact some of the broadband companies in the area? Maybe they could do it for us?
Well, say who else? Just put them in the tech. We have.
I'd like to recommend what this board could do is issue an RFQ. And we could, you know, look at where we would send that, but in the RFQ, we would be asking, we would have to decide exactly what we want this individual to do, and then ask folks to submit to us their qualifications for, for performing such work. We would ask for references, other projects that they've worked on, so. And, and what their hourly rate would be for performing these services. I would suggest to you that, that might be the way to proceed.
I would like to see that. I'd like to see whoever we get come in and maybe we can ask questions and they can tell us what their, what their job would be doing, and I think that'd be good.
My concern, you know, we talked to the gentleman at St. John's. I, I look at this pretty close around the county and the realm, where I'm at, and I don't know what's left out there. I mean, when they're down plowing cable at Rainbow Lake, they've got it in Ashley. They've got it. I, I don't know if they have it in North Star yet or not, but, you know, they have it in Pompeii, they have it in Perrington. That's hard cable. I think what you got is the Warner Road, the ten houses on Warner Road, you know, for ten miles or whatever. I don't know what's left. You know, that's my only concern. And then, you know, the one, the one conversation we had was where he talked about maybe they would plow on the hard cable and then we would become managers of it or something and hook it up to the houses and. I, I, I think that's going to take more than three million dollars to do that, you know, and, and as I said.
I think, I think what I hear John saying is that if we could find someone that could just manage to manage what, what, we don't even know. I mean, I'm sitting here and I know, I know that they've got hard cable in, in these areas. There's other areas that are lacking. Now, I always thought, like Elon Musk, you take the satellite, you bounce it off, you bounce it down to the ground, and you got a box and you pick it up. But I can't tell you that for sure. I think what we really need is is someone that can guide us in those directions, whether we need to do it or not. And I, I've not heard, anybody that we would hire, I'm afraid, would have their own stake in the game. They want, they want an outcome and they want to be paid. And I, so I'm just looking, I don't know of any resources that we can go to and ask, well, what do we need? I want to build this mousetrap, but I don't have a clue how to build it.
But you know, now that you say that, George, maybe, maybe like these guys in Stan is Point Broadband or whatever, they just plowed it all in. I mean, they, I think they took over Cassair or somebody or whatever. They took over a company. Those guys before that got like a twenty-six million dollar grant or something. I mean, they bought, building new trucks. Maybe we ought to see if we could get one of those guys in and see what the future plan is for going down Warner Road or going down Redland or Hood and Vanister and Elba Township.
I just needed to.
Interesting to see what their plan is, what they're, what are they going to do? Because I think, and I've always, I don't know many of you know him, but I always say Tom Bradley would be the last one to get hard cable in his house. He's right at the end of Redland Road and that road goes nowhere. It's in Elba Township, and he just at the end by the.
That's what, in the broadband industry, that's what they call the last mile.
Yeah, and he.
Nobody wants.
Mile to him.
Exactly, and so.
But I, I wonder if we could, if we could talk to some, have somebody come in and see what their plans are for our county.
I hate to be dumping on Tracy all the time, but that's her job, kind of like, let her explore out there to see what's, what's out there that we can, can look.
I, I think we could find out. I know this point has put a lot in around in the rural areas where I'm at, but I don't know who's doing it in Elma, you know, and who.
They're, they're doing it in Elma.
The same company.
Yeah, they're plowing, well, they're plowing in, they're plowing in fiber optic.
Right, but they're the ones, then they're the ones that come back. Like, I think mine was CMS. But Point put it in and they were tied up with CMS out of Mount Pleasant, so they're managing. I pay CMS. But, and I, I think I paid Point, you know, they hooked it up for free. They kept my house for free, but I had to maybe commit a year to them or something, fifty bucks a month or something. So, but they, they plowed it into my house. And so I wonder if they were, maybe they are the big player in the, in the county. I have no idea. You know, I don't know who's plowing it in around, but it seemed like if we could get one of those guys to come and say, what are your plans? Or what, I mean, are you going to stop it? Middleton, Perrington, those types of places? How will these people out in the country get broadband?
Yeah.
Us trying to hire somebody to tell us. And, and like my house on Tyler Road, my, our old place just west of JJ Ruby's, we didn't have any high-speed internet out there. There's, there's nothing down that road on Tyler Road. I, I think the, the two questions that, that I think is, what, what are we looking at as a county? And then the, the second question would be, what would the customary be looking at for cost? And I know at the Elma City Council meetings, there was some debate that went back and forth after Point Broadband put in their system, that the average person was, I think it was like seventy-one dollars, seventy-eight cents, seventy-two, seventy-two bucks, like that. And so there was a fair amount of debate there, like, is that really helping the person?
Because Spectrum right now is that much just for.
It's eighty dollars from Spectrum.
Just for the internet.
Cable.
Seventy-two dollars or something like that. Not, not including your, if you had TV or, that's just to get internet.
So the.
So what's the?
The two, the two-part question, and I don't know the answer to that either, is the person who's out in the boondocks, are they going to pay seventy-two bucks? I, I think it would, because now what they're doing is shooting off of silos. I mean, we used to shoot off a tower. I had a thing on my little boat thing, little dish, and I had a high speed and it was fine. You know, unless the tower thing went down or whatever, but it went to a tower and somebody fed that tower.
Except for your home?
My home.
It was?
Yeah. And, you know, there's small companies out there, like Daystar is a company out of Owasso. And they're just coming into St. John's and, and now they're kind of struggling. They're kind of scrambling over there. I'm going to take this road, I'm going to take that road. But we were one of the first ones, us in the Catholic Church and the school, Catholic schools and stuff in St. John's to hook up to their high speed. And they've come all the way down twenty-one out of Owasso. They fill into Ovid and things like that. They're a small company, you know, and, and getting larger. I think this point is probably bigger, right?
Yeah.
But I, I'd like to see, you know, if they're the biggest player in our county, maybe if they could have a representative come and say, really, what are your plans? And what are options for people to get that stuff? You know, because CMS outside of Mount Pleasant used to have these little discs, and I think they still have it. I have some people that not, that not plowed in cable to their house. You know, and I think I pay like fifty, fifty-five dollars, but I, maybe I got a hundred, I don't even understand, I got a hundred, a hundred, a thousand, over a thousand or something.
Talk about those small dishes that mount, a lot of time you see them out in the country, they'll bounce signals off others.
Yeah.
Well, look at the windmill people, because it breaks up the signal. They say, there, there's always a question, but I've been in, I've been in actual people's homes when they turn on the internet, and if the, if the tower is, or the windmill tower is out of a certain direction, it will break that signal off. Screw up their TV. They're upset. You know that? Yeah.
So Tracy, could you describe the RFQ again and exactly what that would be doing?
Yeah, if I could first kind of summarize some things that, that I'm hearing. The, the idea is to have someone come in and talk to the board and, you know, more information is, is always helpful and better. But, you know, we, we had the conference with John's contact and, you know, here, here we are still. We're hearing about funding resources and here we are still. So just the idea of getting someone that can wrap their arms around all of that. So the things that have been talked about are, you know, tracking funding opportunities, then securing that funding in, in whatever way is necessary depending upon the source. Questions are raised about technical aspects. What about wind turbines? Can they help or are they in the way and how do we work around that? Satellites are discussed. Is that the wave of the, the future and is it the near future? Or cable in, in the right of way? Are we, are we still there? You've raised questions and the issue came up of business models. Should we have, should we lay it, own it and lease it, or, and then what other business models are available? And then finally, you, you raised the question in essentially, what is happening, by whom and along what timeline in the county? That's a lot, and that is for someone with all the technical expertise that could be very helpful to us. A requ, a request for qualifications, it's a solicitation for a professional service. And all of those questions would be raised. We would ask folks that would respond or prospective project managers to list what experience do you have? And we, we'd come up with the wording and the specifications together, but what experience do you have in exploring projects of technical nature? We'd have to wordsmith it. What experience do you have in assisting with, with funding or identifying funding opportunities? What contacts do you have with folks in this industry? And so we, we'd have to put our heads together and determine what other items we would want an individual to respond to. Then, of course, we would ask what this individual's hourly rate would be. And then the, the, uh, the, the contract would, could be given to the person who seems to have the funding and technical expertise best fitting our needs and at a rate that we think that we can live with. We would also ask approximately how many hours we think would, would be required for this individual to do this. So that's what a request for qualifications and RFQ would look like in very general terms.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lumberman. Do we have a second?
Well, just, just another little talk here. Would we be asking these parties that would put their answer the RFQ? more succinct? Would we then want to even explore it farther? In other words, we have three or four people that said, we, I can do this. I can do this. I can do this. But maybe that the interest this board has, we could interview them and come in and ask them questions. What would you do here? What would you do there? You know, I I don't mind paying for expertise, but what at the end of the day, I I kind of I want to know what I'm going to get for it.
George, if I could suggest, I think at the very least, you would want to have, I I think, two of you sit on a group that would review these these proposals. Certainly, there could be an interview with the board. You'd have to structure that a little bit that, you know, how much do you want to ask the person to give you in terms of information? Without actually having been retained, but we could could strike that balance. But if it helps you at all, my concept of this would be to have two of you involved in the review of the our the qualifications that are the responses that are.
So we found if we found the person to do this, what's our end goal? What's our end goal with this person to go out and give us a grant to try to run cable to Tommy Bradley for one customer? I mean, what happens here in Ithaca, I know just from my operation, there's two or three providers here already. I mean, we got Windtel. I think we use Windtel here. And we have Charter. We have, I think there's two or three here, Dave, providers already. So would you be trying to hire somebody else to be another provider here?
No. No, I I think the.
I I guess my question is what's going to be left for somebody to to take? What's going to be left in our county? You know, for, I'm not saying a handful of people, but maybe a few hundred people.
We don't even know that for for a time. I don't know. How many square miles have we got in this county that are not currently getting internet?
I I think it would just help us make an informed decision. Like, I don't know what I don't know. That's where I'm at. I don't.
I mean, so. Decision, what what would we want to decide? Would we want to decide? I mean, somehow we want to provide this this internet or make sure they can get it, you know? I I guess I look at communities I've lived in, you know, for a long time, we had the radio signal. They I think they had Baronet or something and Ashley was a radio signal type of thing, you know? So I I think, you know, I know. Or Seed Farm has got two big towers out there, two big silos or something with things on them or grain legs or something with big towers on them that people get. Everybody bounces off them and stuff. I think Stewart's do out by Bannister. So in Bannister, I mean, Dave Kirby, there's nothing in the ground, but I know Kirby's Autobody has high speed internet with a tower or with a dish thing or something, you know? And I think he bounces off Mars or Stewart's or somebody's farm.
Yeah, isn't there also something with the phones now? My sister lives way out in the country and she has Verizon. And she has high speed internet off her Verizon.
You can get a hotspot.
Yeah.
Just like having another phone line.
You've got.
I think we're looking at the providers who are going to have to provide the service. I don't see the county being able to do something like that, you know? And I do like your idea, Sam. I do like your idea, Sam, that we should bring one of the major players in and 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 ask them for something.
I think we all need to be able to ask questions. There might be questions that one of us has that the other one wouldn't even think of. It also educates all of us.
I guess the question is, who do you want to ask the question to? Somebody.
Well, that's the point is that higher, yeah, that's so it's.
I can't wait.
Time getting my arms around this one.
Oh, we ask it for maybe hit two or three and have them come in at different, you know, like one meeting or.
I don't think you're tying these guys up. They're out making money and working, you know, they're private firm. And I just think that I don't know who the biggest player would be in this county. You have any idea, Dave? I mean.
I think it's between CMS and Point, Point.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you said, there's at least four.
And high speed in ground. Yeah.
Well, in between CMS.
Yeah.
Like you said, you're using something else.
Yeah. It's in Brown, the name of a company.
I think we're talking to Jamie Khan at the city of Ithaca or the city manager over in Elma. Already ran through some of this. I know Jamie's working with Project Point now on some possible projects in Ithaca. He might have a better hand or those guys might have a better handle on what already what's not being done.
You know, here's something I have no idea, but like the city of Ithaca, Dave, would they? Would they like if I if I own broadband cable company or whatever it is? Would I have to like get approved to come here and do that? Or could I just sell it to people and plow it in?
Well, you have to have approval and work with the right of ways and all that kind of stuff. And I think that's what the point project is going through.
I see.
I saw a couple maps at City Hall where they had like phase one, phase two. But you also have to understand that some of those places, my daughter, her own, look down Hastings throughout the country, the only way they can get Wi Fi is a tower deal. And it's it's about twice the price of what it is here in town. So those are some things to I would consider. You know, the technology's out there, but it isn't always cost effective. I think they're paying 140 some dollars a month because they're in a position, they can only get it off satellite. And they don't want to spend the money for the three residents down their road to like cable. So so they pay the long dollar and it's not really good high speed internet. You got a point. I think your, my goal would be to make sure that everybody has it and it's affordable at the same price.
Well, and that's when the government steps in with their billions of dollars and they say, fine, we'll do this project. But I I don't know how you get from here to there.
Well, supposedly it is coming.
I just don't know how to get from here to there. I wish I did. I wish I did. Well, just by having this discussion, maybe the the newspaper world will pick up on that, tell them that the county is looking for somebody to help them. But I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the animal's going to look like. But at the same time, we can authorize the RFQ to go out and if we don't like it, we don't have to do it.
Right.
I mean, it's it doesn't it doesn't cost us anything to see what's there. So I'm.
I would urge you, I would urge you, though, to be somewhat serious about doing this because it does cost firms something to put these proposals together. And I I think that we would be wanting to do this and submitting this RFQ in in good faith.
Well, we do it in good faith, but if it at the end of the day, it didn't doesn't doesn't look like the we're going to be able to do what we think we're going to be able to do, you know, you don't press forward with it either.
Okay. Well, I think we started this discussion, John, you made a motion, but I never heard a second.
Right. I'm going to support the motion.
Okay, so we do have a second. All right.
What is, we repeat the motion?
To authorize Tracy to put an RFQ looking for a project manager for broadband, listing the funding resources, their experience and cost. Is that right? That's what I got from.
That was more than I said.
So sorry.
I really believe that when we do this, we're looking to really hire somebody to tell us what to do. I'd go about it.
Yeah, if if there's something that we can do, I don't even know if we want to do it, but I.
I think I think yes, I think we're looking, I mean, if you put, if you put an RFP out for a project, you say you're going to kind of do something and and give us your best way to fix it or how to do it. And I think this is the same way that we're going to tell people that she's going to let this out to that we want to hire somebody to tell us what to do, whether we do it or not. I mean, are we?
Yeah.
You know, versus saying to one of these guys, can we get one come in? Can we get the kid from Mount Pleasant come in? I mean, they're a smaller operation. Can you get somebody to come in and say, what do you think the plan is for our county? You know, and and why aren't you going out and going down Warner Road or Bliss Road or wherever, you know? Why? They've captured all the people, kind of, you know, where they've gathered. It's the easiest place to put it in. How will those people ever get it, you know? I think that way they were just asking for information versus saying to somebody, we're thinking about hiring somebody to do this, whether we end up doing it or not. I mean, we're going to put somebody on the payroll to do this and tell us what how that will happen before we know if anybody would come.
Yeah, but if you have several different companies already in Grasham County, are you talking about somebody coming in and checking on all these other companies?
No, 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 no. I I'm talking about calling one of these companies, whether it be, you know, one of Mount Pleasant, they've been around a long time, you know, and and these guys over here, I mean, they just bought these people out. I think they're a nationwide company, but they must have a manager over at Stanton that runs that operation, you know? I I guess what I'm thinking about, if you had one of those people, if you invited one of them to come to a meeting and said, we really want to talk about this and how will our county end up? You're plowing it in Elma and Ithaca and, you know, Rainbow Lake and you're putting it into Middleton. You have it there and there. How will how will the people out in the country get this? Will they ever get it? But, you know, I'm just thinking that doesn't cost us anything. We're looking for information on they get it. And they say they'll never get it. And then you could say to them, is there any way that this could be done? Is there any way a county could do this? You know, is there any way, you know?
Some of those companies may already have a some sort of a long term plan in place.
Yeah, you don't know.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
But you know what? If you've got two, two or three companies already in Grasham County, and like you said, they might have, all three might have a plan eventually covering this whole area. So are we going to be bringing somebody new in or taking one of these guys?
Or we're just like, we're going to hire somebody to give us some information how it gets there versus saying, what's your plan? You know, I, you know, I think like we come on our side of the lake. The other side of the lake had it because Middleton had it first. That's why consumers built a plant, a factory or a facility down there on 57. They had sewer. They had water available. And they had high speed internet to come through Middleton to get to the other side of Rainbow Lake and the nursing home and all that. And then they just plowed it on our side when they come to Perrington, then they shot it down Frank Algeri or Frank times Island or something to catch our side of the lake, you know? So there's a gathering of people there that they plowed. You know, and then it's out in front of our house, the big orange cable. And then these guys just come and tap it, put it in our house for X amount of dollars. You know, so and then they went from there and they 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 went down past the lake and now they're in Maple Rapids. So they're plowing that orange cable in Maple Rapids. I don't know who's going to be the guy that hooks it up to their house. But they had them little wheels of cable that plowed them into Maple Rapids. You know, and I think it all started coming down through Perrington and I don't know where it comes from, Ithaca or.
It came across 57 into Middleton and then Perrington originally.
Is that how it comes from?
I hooked up to that fiber eight, nine years ago.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, they, there's a reason that these companies have come in and wired St. Louis and Elma, for example, because they know that there's a profit to be made there. And there's a reason why we are seeing state and federal entities looking for funding and offering funding for rural broadband because government tends to step in and do things and pay for things that some people need, but may not be profitable for these particular companies, wouldn't be profitable for the county to lay it and lease it and and so forth. But, you know, the emphasis has been starting with, well, you all know why we're, folks are talking about rural broadband. But, you know, somebody's got to get their arms around what this is going to require, where it is, where it isn't. What would it take to get it done and how might it be funded? And we just don't, there is no one like that. I mean, the the discussions have been largely anecdotal. And with these anecdotal discussions, I'm not sensing that we've, there's been any movement on this. Some discussions which are are important, but I haven't sensed that we're any further down the road. If the county does want to be exploring broadband and perhaps being able to take advantage of state and federal funding that's been, we've been told for quite some time, is coming down the pipe.
Ready? Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote on this?
I think we exhausted it.
I think so. Okay, if no further discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Pose nay?
No.
No.
Okay, I count three to two, motion pass.
All right.
Okay. All right, next. On the agenda, I have American Rescue Plan issues. Is that something you're going to cover, Tracy?
Well, you have several entries under that and.
Okay, all right, I got you. Yeah, that's the title. Okay. First is, we're going to get a report from KESA, Michelle.
That's that's CASA, of course, and you folks had made or contributed some of the county's ARP funds to CASA, you may recall, and helped that program to continue, frankly, because they would not have had operating funds next year. So you have kept them afloat and something that some of you have expressed, it makes perfect sense that when we give money away, we'd like folks to come and tell us how they're using that funding and how things are going. And that's what these folks appear to do for us tonight. Take it away, Michelle.
Do we? I'm sorry, do we have permission to proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to come and update you on the American Rescue Plan dollars. Like Tracy said, without the funding, we would very possibly have not been able to continue as of October 1st. We had, we had been notified that we were going to be losing our major funding source. So today, we just kind of like to share with you what we've been doing with those dollars, how we've been moving forward and kind of what advancements we've been able to make. My name is Michelle Zabek and I also have Rachel with us. She's gonna kind of get us started.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Michelle. Hi, my name is Rachel Mullins and I am the CASA Recruitment Coordinator for Child Advocacy. And so I will just kind of get us started with our PowerPoint. As you guys maybe already be aware, CASA or Court Appointed Special Advocates is a program under the Child Advocacy umbrella. Under Child Advocacy, there's four major programs. There's CASA, our Grasham County Substance Abuse Coalition, our Children's Advocacy Center, and then our Child Abuse and Neglect Council. And today, what we would like to do is talk to you guys about the demand that we have seen, the impact we have given to our community, the advocacy work that we've done, and also connection within the community in our first quarter, which was October 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
So we're happy to share that due to funding that we received, we didn't skip a beat. We were able to maintain the advocacy efforts and staffing that we have grown to be a standard in our community. And one thing that actually did change for us is we were able to increase our advocacy effort. We went from 24% to 36% of serving the demand in our community. Now, these numbers fluctuate due to the fact of the children that are brought into care. However, we're pretty proud of the fact that we've we've been able to increase our advocacy efforts for the children in our community. Just to kind of refresh your memory as to what that involves, Rachel, if you could go to the next slide for me? Thank you. So what you're looking at here and you should have in your packet, what our volunteers do is they're highly trained. They go through a very specialized training. So they are able to learn about as much as they can about a child and their circumstances. And unlike paid volunteer, unlike paid employees, they're able to focus one case and really dive in. So they are able to engage weekly with that child and really find out what's going on, what their needs might be. They're able to collaborate with a variety of community resources and partner agencies that are involved. And not only do that, but we do a weekly or biweekly update, sharing the information that we've found. So all of those entities are aware. sharing the information that we've found, so all of those entities are aware, um, and kind of sort of speak on the same page. We create recommendations that would help the children and being they're involved in these cases. And we create a formal court report um, that goes to hearings that are involved with these children and families. So that's kind of in a nutshell what um, our volunteers are doing, but why it's so critical, important to keep our program going. Next slide. So actively right now, um, we have nineteen volunteers. And not all of our volunteers are on cases currently due to breaks, click, um, cases closing. Um, and uh, food adoptions and different things, but we have a a pretty solid foundation that we're working um, very actively on growing. But what those volunteers have been doing is they've been able to, even still with the craziness of COVID and um, the restrictions that have been in place, um, we've still been able to do a lot of visits. So in three months, our volunteers have coordinated and been involved in a hundred and thirty-five visits, which is a lot. And they've accumulated over four hundred and ninety hours on casework, um, reviewing um, you know, materials that are pertinent to the child and the family. Um, have been able to, with schools, get information that is imperative on their success in um, in their future education. So they're doing a lot of of meeting with these kids, and the most important part is that they're showing um, continuity and consistency for a child. So one person every single week is there with them. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, as some of you may remember, that um, our kids unfortunately sometimes change placements, they change schools, but wherever that child goes, the CASA follows. So that's one thing that helps these child or the child or sibling groups in kind of going through the process that they are. Next slide, please. So these are some of the lovely faces that represent um, our program. Um, we have an ex- huge um, wealth of knowledge. Um, staring at you right now, very dedicated individuals that want nothing more than to ensure that children have permanency. Whether that's with their biological family or um, a guardianship or an adoption. These um, are very dedicated people who do this because they care for these kids, not because of a paycheck. Uh, and they really truly go above and beyond, obviously, almost four hundred or five hundred hours in um, a three-month time span is a lot um, for a volunteer experience. I apologize, I just got a notification. You doing okay, or does Rachel need to step in?
Your your audio is is a little um, um, un- uneven, Michelle, so if you just stay close to your microphone, that would be good.
I will try again, and if it continues, I will let Rachel take over. So some of the advocacy measures that we're performing um, include in being involved simply with the schools. Unfortunately, many of our paid professionals do not have the time to go into the schools and interact and sit in meetings that are necessary for our children, the success of our children that are um, involved in these types of circumstances. We go to the me- medical visit. Some of our children have are medically fragile, or they just have circumstances where an extra set of ears and eyes need to be there, so they ensure that um, the resources that um, need to be followed up on are done. We've attended court twelve times in a this last quarter. We have advocated for and supported and helped implement over a hundred and fourteen services for the children that are involved in our community. And we've made ten different referrals for additional services that might um, potentially might have been needed for a child. And we've had to make at least one referral to law enforcement due to circumstance um, that happened. Once again, um, these are just some of the things and the reasons why our volunteers um, are involved in just because of that paycheck of the heart. They really want to make sure that children are being taken care of. Uh, um, some of our volunteers just saying, children matter, kids deserve a voice, children deserve to be heard. And that is one thing that sometimes we forget, um, that many times we're in court. Um, the parents are being discussed and what's going on and improvements that they've made upon um, their case or areas where more improvement needs to be made. But we're actually able to speak on behalf of the child because we are interacting so consistently with them and um, provide um, information directly from the child.
Alrighty, so I um, just kind of want to kind of wrap things up a little bit, but in regards to our first quarter, we are very proud that to say that we have made seventy-eight connections with the community um, about CASA. Um, we're quite proud of that, and we're um, very excited and eager to continue moving forward with this direction and expanding that number as um, it starts to get warmer outside and restrictions continue to ease up more and more. Um, in this last quarter, we were able to connect with um, different organizations and different church groups as well. Um, and one unique opportunity that um, we were able to participate in in that first quarter was a trunk or treat, so that was a lot of fun. Um, in addition, we are very excited to share that we are planning to hold a late spring training uh, for new volunteers, um, some more to come on that. Um, in addition, we have two exciting things that we wanted to share that is happening for our program. Um, first is that we are pioneering a work group with other CASA programs throughout Michigan um, to work together and collaborate specifically about our recruitment efforts. Um, and in it also, our program has been um, nominated and selected to be a part of the Rural Advisory Committee through National CASA, so we are very excited about those two opportunities and will um, be able to share more about those as um, we move forward with them. Um, our last slide just has our contact information, um, website, phone number, but we're also here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Couple of more things that I wanted to add is the dollars have been um, really specifically been able um, to support staff and training um, new volunteers and supporting um, current and active volunteers and keeping their training current. But also as issues arise and emergencies happen, staff is there to support um, volunteers. Um, staff for the CASA program act as the liaison for many different partner agencies in the commu- our community. Um, so not only has it paid for um, providing staff dollars, but also keeping our volunteers up to date on training. Um, and not only that, but specific needs of the children in our community. Um, since COVID and whatnot, it's been very difficult with uh, policy procedures to bring things in, to do interactions with children play games and whatnot. Um, and to be able to take that away. So some of those dollars have helped us provide activities um, to take with the kids. We've also been able to make sure that the kids have what they need to be successful in school. Um, this sounds really silly, but we had um, one of our kids had glasses and the poor kiddo could not keep those darn glasses on his face. We were able to swoop in and just buy glasses band for him. I mean, that sounds silly, but it was a need, and because of um, the dollars that we have, we were able just to take care of that and the family didn't have to worry about it. So supporting our children and needs that um, they may have and also making sure that our um, our volunteers are being are up to date and is aware um, with laws and training and different things that they can help advocate for um, the children in our community.
Okay, any, any questions?
I guess my my only question is uh, thirty-six percent of the demand, is it the, is it just a fact that you're too short-staffed? Or what, how how do you come up with that?
So, um, that's an excellent question. Um, to make it um, as as valuable as possible, each um, volunteer is only assigned one case. So they are able to totally immerse themselves in that one case. And unfortunately, some of those cases have a lot of moving, swinging, revolving parts, so it's very important for that one volunteer to focus on that child. Um, and with the the demand, yes, we simply don't have enough volunteers. That's why when Rachel was talking about those seventy-eight connections, that's where we're going out into the community, trying to find volunteers actively, excuse me, recruiting to try and find more people that will um, participate and advocate on behalf of these children. Unfortunately, we, the role that our volunteers um, require, it's a, it's very, a huge commitment. From the very beginning, one of the very first questions that we ask is, are you able to make a two-year commitment? Um, are you able to follow a child if they move to Chiawasi County from Grashit County? Um, are you able, you know, do you need, you know, different supports? Do you need a computer? Are you able to, you know, there's a lot of different things um, that are necessary for a volunteer, so we may interview, you know, go through and speak to twenty, thirty people before we find one person that might be appropriate and might be able to fulfill the obligation. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Well, I wanna thank you for uh, reporting back to us.
Um, just because this is a newer program um, of that we're kind of working with here, if there's something that we didn't report on that you would like to know about, please, we welcome your, you know, feedback and uh, can try and, you know, report differently to ensure that we're um, giving you the information that you're looking for. But all in all, we've been thrilled um, with the dollars and truly appreciate the support of the commissioners and the funds. Uh, and on behalf of the children in our community, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You. Alright, we're moving on uh, Village of Ashley. Robert?
Afternoon, Evi. My name is Robert Stute. I'm Village of Ashley Council. Uh, with me is Kristen Mills, she's on the Village Council, Joel Zucker, EPW Supervisor. Um, thank you for having me to come here, ask for this request for the ARP funding. Does everybody have a copy of what we sent and what? I I'm not gonna go all the way through it, I'm just going to explain to you why we're asking for this money. Um, first one is for a lift station. Uh, station was put in in nineteen seventy, it's been there ever since uh, fifty-two years roughly. Uh, it's it's very outdated. Uh, nickel and dimes us, so we just keep putting money into it and putting money into it. It it just, it it has to be updated. The villages don't have the funds to do that. Um, that's why we're asking for these. Uh, we're asking for a uh, a standby generator two. Right now, we have called a trash pump, a four-inch trash pump mounted on a trailer, an engine that when the power goes out, Joel goes down, drops a hose down into the wet well and hooks it up into a bypass, and we pump to the lagoons. It's something that you don't have a spare. If that pump went down, we are in serious trouble. We we would be backing up all over town. So so we would like to update the the lift station and be able to have a generator, so when the power does go out. Currently, we have used the City of Ethicus. But if we have a major power outage over the whole county, they're gonna be using theirs, a- a- and and we just, we have nothing. So that's why we're asking for that. Um, the other project is, we purchased a couple of years ago, seventy-eight acres out on fifty-seven between Arnold and McClellan Road, hoping for development. Uh, downtown, just, there's nothing there. Um. So we purchased that, we're, part of it is going to be set aside for a lagoon expansion in the future. Um. Right now, i- i- it's a pretty sure thing, we have a Dollar General store coming. Um, so we're hoping once we get one building out there, some more will come, but we need help getting the infrastructure out there, the water, sewer. We need about thousand feet of water main, twelve hundred feet of sewer. Um, you see the costs on page three, I have everything down here. Um. The village portion uh, ARP funds that we got is is fifty-seven thousand forty-four dollars. We were gonna use two thousand of that to help with the blight, but Tracy has mentioned that she dropped that to a thousand, so we can take a thousand off there and off the bottom. We do need to install heat and air conditioning in our community center, so we wanted to use that out of our portion. The fifty-seven is total. I have been in contact with Roger Slavik, the supervisor for Elba Township, to see if we could get some help from them to try and knock this number down. He hasn't given me an answer yet. Uh, he didn't say no, but uh, so I I'm trying to get some money from them also, so that we can knock this this portion of this down, so. If you have any question, I mean, that's that's kind of a quick over.
Oh, the total cost you're asking is?
It is, it'll be six thirty-two seventy-five, because we'll take a thousand off from that from uh, Tracy knocking the blight down.
Right.
I don't think townships now are gonna give any money, because now they can put it on their roads or.
All the towns, it's all changed now.
Yeah, since it changed.
Yes, it did.
Thing has changed.
They can stop saying, we're just gonna do the back.
The the game, yeah, that that that.
That's what it sounded like to me at the beginning, is they were gonna give it all back and we were gonna hopefully get it, but but with some of the changes made.
Right.
We'll be lucky to get anything, but I wasn't told no, so I'm hoping.
Sometimes maybe no answer is a no.
No answer, yeah, no answer is a no answer, yeah.
I'll I'll make a motion that we allow to uh, give the city or the village of Ashley six hundred and thirty-two thousand and seventy-five dollars.
Six hundred and thirty-three I got here.
No, it'll, we're gonna take a thousand off.
I think you should just make a hundred, six hundred and thirty-three thousand even. Yeah, let's just make a hundred or six hundred and thirty-three thousand even.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Bunting. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Smith.
I do have a question.
And questions.
Running running that sewer and water out there, if there is another development, you end up like Middleton, where there, yeah, truck stop or party store, gas station thing. Will then lines be big enough? Lines will be able to.
Yes.
I I don't know much about sewer, I just know it goes away, but they'll be big enough.
Yes, the station we want is going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, is gonna be big enough for upgrades in the future.
Yes, the the lift station that we'd go with, which supplies for six, six businesses currently.
Just stick them out.
But you're saying it could be expanded?
It could be expanded, yes.
And the line you're talking about is big enough?
Yes.
Okay, the line going out there, so you'd have, I don't want to, not supposed, but you'd have enough then to really, by then you'd be generating some tax dollars if the if that, if you need to expand.
And and as we sell property, we'll have money to help fund more extensions.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, uh, currently, all the the first round of money has basically been all spoken for. So.
Chris is there, I mean, he.
But I think Chris has a, it's being spread out somewhat. Chris, are you on the line?
I got the paper right here. You still have a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and four cents. And then we're gonna be giving three hundred and three million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seven.
I under, yeah, I understand that, but they want to get going.
Right, so.
This doesn't come to me.
Right, we're looking at like uh, two hundred and seventy thousand that uh, like.
We need some shuffling of some.
Well, it's gonna take us a little bit of time too, though, George, because we got to, it's gotta be engineered.
Yeah.
It permits, so I mean, i- it's gonna take a few months for that, so.
Chris had some ideas on how we could help you.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
The question is, currently, um, the the motion on the floor is to, for six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, to to um, help Ashley uh, uh, develop and to make, to fix some sewer problems. The money isn't available currently to do that with what we've got earmarked. So is there a way that we can use some of that mon- the money that hasn't been spent yet?
Uh, I would need to get an update from Tracy.
I would need to get an update from Tracy on where the health department building project is at. I know that we've started getting bills related to the engineering for the HVAC and air movers out there, but without knowing where that stands, I don't, I, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
Well, Chris, wouldn't, for instance, the, the CASA money is that, there's like two years in the future on that that we haven't spent yet, right?
Tracy, you've been on mute. Yeah, we've had, got two years of CASA contracts and two years of laptops also, but that totals $340,000. And I know that we have additional requests coming up also too.
Are you going to need, I guess my question is, do you get your engineering done and other things? Are you going to have the money to take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
We can, we can get started with that, yes.
So you're, what I heard you say is, we get the money in May, that will be adequate?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure is that.
Well, yeah.
Hold them up.
I got to believe that if they take minutes of this board, ABC contractor and say, the money's here and it's committed to them.
So, okay, all right. I just wanted.
If I may comment. Bob, what you could do meanwhile is take, it'd be just over 10 grand from the Ashley, your $57,000 and go ahead and do your community center AC and heat and also do your blight because you have that money now, right?
Yes.
So you could go ahead and peel those off.
We have half of that money right now. We get the other half like you do.
Okay, but you're going to have 10 grand.
We've got, we've got plenty of money. We've got enough to do that stuff, yeah.
So you can do that now. That would reduce the village share that you have listed here, but also would reduce the total cost of all projects. So your funding request would still be the $623,075. It doesn't really change the numbers. But you can just change those numbers around a little bit and get started with those other things.
All right, with the cash you have, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, any other questions?
I kind of have a question. I kind of have a question. You have to, you have to redo your sub pump, right?
Our lift station.
Your lift station, I'm sorry. So with all the rain coming in and stuff that we've had lately, does that affect that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we, we have infiltration problems. The pumps are undersized. When it was built, it was fine, but the town grew some and now they're undersized. So when you get rain, both pumps running is still backs up. There, there's actually a new house built, a lot next to it, that has backed up in the basement right off the bat. They weren't there a year. So we've got to do something.
So that I, I will give you a kind of a, a thing that you could do. Get a hold of Breckenridge. They redid their substation, the sub, substation. And I took a tour of it. It was, I was very impressed with it all. And you might get some ideas or they might give you some ideas since, you know, you.
Right, that's, that's good, thank you.
We just asked Jeff Oldstranger.
Yeah, I know Jeff.
Okay, yeah, I'm very impressed with what they did.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Ready, any other questions? Angie, should we have a roll call or can we do this folks vote?
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, motion passed. Looking forward to some development out there.
So are we.
That's, that's all most of the dollars.
Yeah.
Coming to the, coming to the community.
I remember we talked a little bit about, we got these funds. If you drive by five, 10 years from now and say, you know, the county had a part in making that happen.
Right.
I, I think it's going to be a good thing.
I wish I was 20 years younger, I'd start a business out there.
Pizzeria, pizzeria on 57.
I know.
I would think it'd be a great location for a gas station and several things there. It's 57.
Yes.
Are you still having the train come through this next year?
Pardon?
Are you guys going to still have the?
Next year, yes. Coming back.
Good.
I'm here to help out there, it's fun.
Okay, next up, Ashley Perrington Fire Rescue. Dave?
I think most everybody, I think everybody here knows who I am, but I won't have any long introductions. And my father was a Methodist minister, so, yeah, I'm going to go with.
The guy's watch on you already, so. Apple fall. On that.
Pass the hat, I'm leaving.
Yeah, well, you know, it took, it took four people to take his paycheck to the church for every week, so. Appreciate the, having, having me come and give a short presentation. I started this with Tracy. Tracy's had a lot to do with this. Beginning, we first requested some help with some radios back when the first rules came out and they were pretty narrow and we really struggled on how we could do that. So with the opening up of the, of the rules a little bit on the ARP funds, it's been beneficial. Just a, just a short synopsis. About 15 years ago, the fire service and the police agencies, shortly after we built a new dispatch center, were struggling with radios. We were able to get funding initially through the authority and with some grant money to buy and move the police agencies all onto the 800 system, which was, been phenomenal. The sheriff can tell you how they used to work with the old VHF radios and the, and the problems they had. There wasn't enough money to do the fire service. The fire service needed additional 140 to 150 radios. We can't share ours on a fire scene, you know, we don't have shifts. So we, we had to, and I was, I was on the dispatch authority board at the time, had to redesign the, the fire system with what we call a motor turbo, put some additional repeaters up and it's gotten us by in the meantime for the last 12 to 14 years. About two years ago, the fire service decided that it was time with the other agencies around us, the other counties around us, some of them have completed the projects to move to the 800 system. A lot of our federal grants who request for equipment and so forth wants to make sure that, you know, on the, on the FEMA applications we do, that we're, that we're interoperable with all the other emergency services agencies in the area, and we weren't. So the project started in, in early 2020, about the time the pandemic did, or, or late 19. The departments to the north, Alma Fire is, is very well funded. They had a, a nice cash reserve at the time. They stepped up, like bought all their 23 or 24 radios they needed. St. Louis wasn't quite as flush. It took them a year or so to get theirs. Breckenridge has approximately 30 firefighters. They have some really nice wind turbine money coming in. So they bought the $6,000 radios and they bought about 30 of them over a two-year process. In Ethica, we didn't have that kind of funding. I was able to obtain approximately seven radios with funding through Luniac Family Foundation and the Grashit Foundation, and we were kind of piecing it together. To make a long story short, in our case, one of our members of our community had a wife die, gave us enough money to buy two radios. Husband died and the daughter and son-in-law came in, gave us enough to buy the rest of the radios. So the one family donated about $45,000 to our program to finish, finish the radio program up. To make a long story short, we started working with Perrington this, this last year as they requested to join the Grashit Services Authority that, that we formed approximately a year and a half ago. And through that process, we realized that they didn't have, they only had four new radios. And, and John can, Nate, their fire chief here, and Janelle is, is with their village council. And John can attest that you're going to carry two of them because you're going to have to talk to your firefighters on this one. You have to have dispatch on that one. And so it became a safety issue. Ashley's struggling, struggling with the same thing. They do have some used ones that are into life cycle, the old police, police radios like this, that, that they're kind of struggling with, that work on and off again. So as chairman of the Fire Chiefs Association and us also chairman of the Board for 911 Authority, I thought, you know, we got to do something different. We've got to get them up so that everybody in the county of police and fire are on the same page. So I just took it about myself as chairman of the Fire Chiefs Association to, to, I talked to both fire chiefs and said, here, here's what I'd like to do. If I've got your blessing, I'm the only one that's full-time in the county as fires. Fire chief, I'll, I'll work on it, see if we can't make the proposal. So, so here I am. Sam asked a good question. You know, you've got radios that you sold back to the vendor because, you know, the police didn't need as many as you purchased. Well, those weren't fire radios and, and they're, 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 they're different from a standpoint. We need something intrinsically safe. I can't even go into certain portions of ZFS without a radio that's intrinsically safe because they have certain types of gases out there that if you spark on, you got to take your, your pager off, you take your cell phone off, anything that has a little arc in it will, will spark an explosion. So then the police agency radios are, are water resistant, but they don't have the waterproof capability that ours do. You know, you can drop one of these in a porta tank and we have, not on purpose, but it's laid in the bottom of the porta tank for an hour and you take it out before you turn it on or anything, whether you dry it out and 99% of the time the next day on these new radios, it's fine. They've got features like larger knobs. They've got larger buttons so that you can wear them with a, operate them with a, with a thing like that. So, you know, Sam had a great question when I called him, was talking to him. Why didn't we just take those radios we had? And so.
Now, let me tell you the question. I called you and said, why in hell do we sell radios?
Yeah.
People wholesale and then have to buy them back at retail.
I would be, I would be in polite. And, and those are very nice radios. You know, and those are, those are approximately, I think, a $6,000 radio if we were paying full price. These are 3,000. Breckenridge has one that's designed specifically for the fire service and you'll see them there, yellow, that are $6,000. We just never had the funding and, and couldn't. They won't do any more than ours. They're just bigger. And if you're in a fire scene and you can't see poop, you know, it's all black, you can, you can use them easier than, than, than these and certainly easier than the. So the, the proposal's simple. We, we, we needed to finish equipping the 11 more radios for Ashley so that each one of their certified firefighters and EMS staff have a radio that they can carry. NFPA requires on a fire scene that, that we have to way communication for 100% of the people on the fire scene. And then secondly, Perrington, it was in a position that, that they have currently approximately 18 firefighters at the time we did this, and they had four radios, so they need 14. So the, the basic request is for 25 radios and the, the dollars to make sure that they're put onto the, the net, network, to get onto the state police network, the NPSCS system. It's $250 a radio initially, and that's good for the radio for the lifetime. So the 25 radios and the $250 apiece, and this is a state bid. I get this, these, these quotes from ProCom. They're saying, everybody pays the same price on the state. We qualify for the state bid on that with Motorola. It's $89,185.75. That's basically the proposal. I, I didn't entertain any questions that you might have. I understand your funds from this round are, are short supply. I have talked to the vendor and he's trying to find a workaround for us to get them ordered. We ordered ours and finally got our, last of ours in last, last January. I ordered them in mid-December. I had them mid-January. The state didn't have them in service to us till October. But that's just the way it is with the program. Right now, it's taken, it's taken 12, 10 to 12 weeks to get the radios, even to the vendor before we can get the serial numbers up and get them to the states. He has had a couple of cases where smaller orders of radios like 25 have come in within two weeks. So then you got an issue of paying with them. So he's trying to work that out. So if they did happen to come in within a couple of weeks, we, you know, we find out. They've got, they have, they personally, through their business, have projects going as many as 2,500 radios at a time right now. So, so he said, once in a while, if the production's right and they see a thing where they can squeeze 25 radios in and they're waiting for components for another, you might, components is part of the issue right now too, so.
Well, with what we did with Ashley and they moved out to May to get their funds and they're going to take some of their money to do some things until that time. What I read here is that we have 137,000 in, in, in the bank.
We got 270,000 in CASA money that there is.
So, I mean, you're only, you're, you're only, but that's, that's a big figure.
Yeah.
85,000, whatever.
89.
89,000, 90, $90,000. So there is enough money currently available to take care of that. So I would make a motion that we allow you to go ahead and we give that $89,000 to, to, to go ahead and get that order in because.
It, it should be 89,200 or if.
Yeah, well.
Are you sure that's going to be enough?
The clerk will take. Yeah, it is. That, that covers the shipping and everything, yep. And, yep.
Yeah, 89.
So.
$100.
So, anyway, the clerk will take care of that, but.
And I can, and I could work with Chris on the.
And, yeah.
Timing and how, how we do that.
Exactly, so we can get that taken care of because safety is paramount and I want to make sure that all the firefighters are equipped with the proper radios and so they can all communicate.
Okay, so.
I'll second that.
George, is your motion 89,200 or that exact?
1,200.
Okay, and Jan seconds it? So we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I think you have to do a roll call.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Angie, when you're ready.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, motion passed.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Are they going to be yellow or are they going to be?
No, they'll be, they'll be black. The, the, that's one thing you get with the $6,000 radios, you get one that's brighter, easier.
There's always spray paint, right?
We've already had one to test. We had one run over by a fire truck. It was under warranty and Motorola was gracious enough.
But they, they, they covered it.
Good. Hey, so, last thing on the agenda here, oh, no, we have a couple. John, you, I believe you wanted to talk about a reserve discussion?
Yeah, just, just basically, I, with the ARP rules being relaxed, I figured we were going to be entertaining projects in a fast and furious clip. And I thought perhaps we should discuss if we wanted to have a reserve held back, you know, perhaps a million, perhaps a million five, that we would hold back just to see how things come out, what's coming down the pike, or perhaps if the county might need the funds if we had our own project, it could be worth.
I'm, I'm sure there's something, something's going to break in the next four years.
I, I think when we get done with this here, it looks like, when we get our funding back, probably just going to be a shade over $4 million that we'll have. I mean, come May, once we pay all of our obligations, I think we'll still have about $4 million bucks even, it looks like. Maybe it will change over, but I don't have a problem at all with that. I, I think that's a good thing to set back. We don't have to spend this money right away. I think we've, we've distributed a lot into the community and, and there'll probably be a few more things that pop up. I don't know what they'd be, but I, I do agree that you could put a billion or a million and a half, 1.5 or something away, just say we're going to set that someplace for a while, you know.
Well, that being said, I'll make a motion that we hold back 1.5 million dollars for, for the future, of the unknown future.
Separate any day fund or whatever. I don't know, let me separate that.
We'll just hold it.
Separately somewhere.
In case.
Somehow.
Ever, you never know in this world what's going to happen. That's, we, we got a crazy guy over in Europe right now, so.
By the way, tonight, the State of the Union will be on, we'll have that.
Yeah, so we have a, a motion to set aside 1.5 million. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lumberman. I heard him first. Angie, you think we should have voice vote on this or can we?
We'll do a roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Oh.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, motion passed. So the only, I think we're on to unfinished business and I believe Matt, you have an update for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide the board with a brief update on our email migration project that uh, presented multiple times in the past. Uh, last week on uh, Monday, February twenty first, we shut down our old email system so that we could migrate email out of that system. And then we went live with the new email system on Tuesday, the twenty second of February. Uh, the migration went very, very well. I was impressed by IT Right's ability to get around and assist people. Um, we had a few minor issues in the first day, just migrating uh, old email into the new system, so we gave some of our users access to the old system temporarily just to kind of tide them over until we were able to get that email to populate into the new system. And then our approach, like I had discussed before, was just to visit each office to assist with migrating contacts and calendars over and, and that went well as well, so. I, I thought that the email migration went, went uh, very, very well and I really appreciate um, the assistance of our email migration work group as well as the team at IT Right uh, to make the project a success and up next, I've talked about this before, about in the upcoming weeks, we'll be adding two-factor authentication to our email system, which will make it um, more secure. Both banks and hospitals and many websites use this method of authentication where you're using your username or email address, a password, and then you get some kind of a notification to let you know that somebody's accessed your account and then you approve that notification or you type in a six-digit um, code, so we're going to move to that system as well. And we'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks. And that's going to be all I wanted to briefly mention to the board tonight, but I did want to give the board opportunity to ask any questions that they had about the project or how, how it went.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Matt?
Um, my email's working good.
Good to hear.
Ready, uh, any uh, additional public comment? You see anybody online, Matt?
Nope, I'm not seeing anybody else connected in tonight.
Hey, well, we've reached the end of our agenda without objection, I believe we're adjourned.